Take it in.
Evening, everybody. This time I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Hinkley Township Board of Trustees to order on Tuesday, July 18 at 6:30 PM. Call the roll, please.
Here.
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 Also present Fiscal Officer Cathwood, Police Chief Senator, Fire Chief Procyon, Superintendent Mike Perry. Like to ask everybody, please stand on the flag.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag. The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will move to approve the minutes for the July 3, 2023 special trustee meeting.
Second.
Second by Augustine, any discussion?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the minutes for the July 5, 2023 special trustee meeting.
Second.
Second by Ashroll, any discussion?
For the purpose of holding the regular meeting, I have some changes. Do you mind if we review them?
Go ahead.
Page two. I just need to blow it up here. Under trustees, second paragraph. It says if they want to consider the township property, this is the second sentence as a no, and I believe it should say as a yes, no, or as if they should count at all. That was the discussion that day. And that pertains to the water infrastructure letter. Again, it's page two, under trustees, second paragraph, second line.
What would you, is it, what would you like there, like?
If they wanted to consider the township property as a yes, comma, no, comma, or if it's, if they should count at all. Are all in agreement? I can go to my next change. I don't recall.
No objection.
Page three, second paragraph, last, I want to add a line if I can to the bottom. I had requested that we send the results of the water survey to the county, and the board was not in agreement, and I would like the minutes to reflect that. Bottom of the second paragraph on page three. And if the board's in agreement, I have one more minor change.
Is that the last one? You're changing something, or is that a new paragraph?
I'm adding it on. I would like the minutes to reflect that I had asked that we send the results to the county.
If we're going to add that in, then it needs to, you also need to add in because we agreed to send the letter to the county if the results were an overwhelming yes. So that was part of the prerequisite of sending the letter.
It's fine with me.
Next.
Well, okay.
Okay.
You got to give him some language.
So you can say that she wanted to send it to the county and the, and the board declined because the results were not supportive of doing so.
You know what, Melissa, you have your laptop. Why don't we table this?
Okay.
I can type it in right now and get, send it to you.
We'll send it to the trustees, so they know what their.
I will send it to all of you, absolutely. And my last change is just a small change. It's in the next paragraph right after that. And I just don't remember discussing this publicly as a board. I just wanted to say as a board. And that's all I have. I will go ahead and email this to everyone right now. Everyone's in agreement.
Well, my point was email it, so you guys know what. Language is.
Yep.
Remending it to you, so we're separate.
Absolutely.
Are you okay there, Melissa?
Yep.
Move to approve the minutes of July 10, 2023 special trustee meeting.
Second.
Second by Augustine, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What are we getting those before, if we're going to see them?
I'm sending them right now if you want to look at that.
That's what I said, Jeff, you wanted to read them before you went ahead and.
Well, that.
We didn't approve that. That motion is still out there. I'll wait for the email. Okay.
Okay.
The changes are highlighted. And sent.
I would just add, as previously agreed with the water, the board was not in agreement, as the majority was not in favor, as previously agreed.
Got it.
Move as amended.
Second.
Second by Augustine, all in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the minutes for the July 12, 2023 special trustee meeting.
Second.
Second by Augustine, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Martha?
There's one more, seven to 10. Saying four.
That's the one I skipped over and did while.
Oh, you did, okay.
We did that as approved. Martha, if you don't mind, I'm going to have Mike go for so, because he's got something pressing this evening. Is that okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
It'll cost him.
No.
Go real quick, something just came through an email that I got to bring up.
Do what?
Something just.
He's passing.
Oh, then I'll.
Back to you.
All I have is the fund status, which is currently at $6,911,722.30, of which $1,109,76.62 are in full investment, $5,802,646.68 primary checking. Our biannual audit has begun. We're going to do an in-house audit this year, and fortunately, I received a waiver for the full audit, so we're going to do what's termed an AUP. And so that's an expedited audit, so that should be a lot quicker and less time. And that's all I have, so I'm going to excuse myself unless anybody has any questions.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
You too.
Michael, you up or no?
Yeah. Um, so I just received an email here. I just sent it off to Jack. One of our trucks had to take up to International Truck 11. It had a check engine code, and they finally just got me an estimate to fix the truck. And that estimate is $2,303. And it says they have to replace the after treatment dozer control unit. It said it had salt pack in the back of it, and rust, or pretty much ate a hole through it, so that truck's been having some issues. I'm looking for approval, I guess, tonight for the board to let them go ahead and fix the truck.
Did you say 2,203?
Two, three, zero, three.
They literally just sent me this email.
And that's everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all the labor, the parts cost, and then the road testing, electrical diagnosis. But we've been, like you said, having issues with this, and finally threw an engine code, so hopefully this, which is our issue with this truck.
Right. So let's move to authorize rush truck centers to make the necessary repairs to
Truck 11.
The Truck 11?
Truck 11.
Truck 11. In the amount of $2,303.
Second.
Second by Ashroll, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect timing.
It's unheard of.
The only other thing that I probably really have is, me and Jack were talking, I went down and spoke with Angie today, and love well delivered the contracts, and I got the contract for Valley Brook. But we were talking about the, I can't remember, what was it, the, it's not ARPA, what was that one, Jack, the what funds? Sorry, the grant, what was the grant for?
OPWC.
The OPWC. And she said if we want to proceed with that, we have to do a letter of intent, send to them. And then, but they still don't know whether it would be loan and or like grant funding, so that's all based on, I guess, county engineers and everything else from kind of what she was telling me, but she said kind of pick what you would want to do next year, and like, one of the projects I said I would do is obviously, let's try to finish out Valley Brook, and then also look at maybe doing the Salem entrance. That way, that entrance is done from the intersection, you know, all the way out, so just something I wanted to bring up, something to think about. So if you guys want to decide to send a letter of intent, you know, we can move forward with it and tell them what project is, so they can do the rest for it.
Okay.
I would support that.
You want to draft that, and we can.
Chances of getting a grant are very small, but there's opportunity there that's worth.
Yeah, if we, if we're in agreement, I'm going to, I told him, we'll have him write up the stuff and send it to Angie with the understanding that we want to be able to have the option to opt out if it's a loan as opposed to a grant.
Yeah, that's the way they traditionally work, and actually, if you ask.
Even call Angie, though, just to kind of, she said, give her a call, so, you know, she'll kind of work us through it.
Okay.
Martha probably has an old letter of intent from 2017 or 2018 that you could even use as a template. Perfect.
Anything else for us?
That's about it.
Okay, it's, we, I will, while Mike is here, I'll make the motion to adopt a resolution to award the contract for 2023 Hinkley Township Concrete Bid for TH357 Valley Brook Boulevard, Brook Hall Oval to 295 Valley Brook Boulevard to Fabrizi Trucking and paving company incorporated, as a successful bidder in the amount of $549,835 pending the review by the Medina County Prosecutor's Office.
Second.
Second by Augustine, discussion here, this, they, they were the lowest bid on there by far, and they're, if we're all in agreement, they're a fairly good company, Mike's worked with them in the past, and so my recommendation is go through with it. So I will call the roll. Augustine?
Yes.
Ashroll?
Yes.
Sweater, yes. Okay, ready to go.
Anybody have any questions from here?
Have a good evening.
Have a good night.
Enjoy your tacos.
Did you guys arm wrestle for the next one?
No, he can go.
Okay, Dave.
Outstanding. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, I got a couple of quick things, and they're all actually good things. So, request a motion to accept the $100,000 donation for the police department, and the $100,000 donation for the fire department from the Parks Foundation for non-specified purposes.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Ashroll. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Very fortunate.
Yes, we're.
Generous.
Very.
Generous people like that in our community.
Without question. Update on 25 River Road. I spoke to the daughter and son-in-law this afternoon. They have put a plan into place to begin next week, getting the, the property cleaned up and moving in that direction. I would recommend to the board that you go ahead with your resolution this evening so that we can continue to make some steady progress in getting what we need to get done.
Perfect.
So family's been awesome.
Perfect.
So trustee Augustine, you have on your agenda speed sign request for ledge. We will be happy to put that out. We'll put it on the list.
Okay, I just wanted to ask you about it because I know that we have done it before, but that's a county road, and I think on the one side it's Granger. I don't remember where we put it before.
We, we did both lanes of travel.
Okay.
And it showed really no vi, no real violation. So, but we'll do it again.
Perfect. And then is there any way that we can compile a thank you note to the Parks Foundation from the trustee?
Already in the works.
Perfect, perfect. If you have anything that you'd like us to sign, let us know.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
And last, but not least, the Police Association purchased this week the projector system for us to continue with movie night, so we have set that for Saturday, August 19. So we will have movie night again. And we have our own system now, so.
Thank you to the generosity of the Police Association.
You are welcome. So we're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
We're already making plans to do something for Christmas as well.
Oh, good.
So, that's all I got.
Wonderful, thank you.
Board have anything else for the chief?
No, just to, if I can piggyback on that. I did reach out to Criterion Pictures, because remember, we do have to pay for the rights for the movies as well. So that's an additional expense, so just to kind of get an idea, I went back to the movies that we voted on last year, and I went to the cycle, the runner-up from last year, and it was The Greatest Showman. And the price for the rights for that would be $350, and it is available for Saturday, August 19. So we can discuss that later on if we would want to. You know, I'm not sure, we wanted to have, you know, Chief and I talked about possibly the association paying for it, or if we want to discuss the township paying for it, or how we want to go about with that.
We have some time to work that out.
Yes.
So, we'll get it taken care of.
But thank you very much.
You're welcome.
For the generosity of the association. Excited movie nights are back.
Yes, me too. It's a lot of fun.
Thank you.
No, anything else? Anybody from the public? Thank you, chief.
Thank you. I, I will take you up on your offer. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
You have a lovely evening.
Good evening. I got one last, last minute item. Request appropriations to, for tuition for Fire Officer One Class of $550 apiece for Lieutenant Tom Kohler and Lieutenant Jared Solomon for a total of $1,100 through Kaihaw Community College for the Fire Officer One Class. These are our two newest lieutenants who are promoted earlier in the year, and this is one of their requirements. I'm only looking for the tuition, is this is online, and they can do it while they're on shift as a part of their, their lieutenant duties on the job.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Augustine, all in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have.
That's it.
That's it.
Well, thank you.
Have anything for chief? Anyone from the audience?
You don't want to leave you. No, I'd like to look. Thank you, guys. Everybody be safe.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Zoning.
Zoning. We have our quarterly report, our second quarterly report's a very exciting time in Hinkley Township.
Everybody settle down.
Don't get you worked up, folks. We have seen nine accessory buildings at a total of $1,422, as well as 11 new residents for $7,241. The total income stream this quarter is $10,938. Total for the year is $19,948, or $46. Any questions on that? Good reading for tonight when you go home.
What is the, I'm looking at the key, it says orange, green, and purple. What would the yellow be?
It's a fine question, sir. Yellow.
I can follow up with him.
There's a, there's a title also. There's a little key, but that doesn't tell us what yellow is. And I have a black-on-white copy, so I didn't see this one until just now. I will look into it for sure.
The first one that's highlighted in yellow. And this one.
All right, very good.
Okay, I'm moving right along. We have the 25 River Road Resolution. I want to see if this board is willing to move forward on the resolution as it pertains to 25 River Road.
Well, I wanted to have a little bit of discussion about it before we move forward with it. I met with Tom last week, and as I understand it, moving forward with this resolution does not mean that we are taking any action. It is sending him a letter saying we intend to take action.
That is correct.
You do not show improvement in 30 days. Is that accurate?
Correct, or he needs to come to us with some type of a plan of action. And this is really the last letter that he would receive.
So, who determines what the plan is? Because what Chief Senator just said, his, his daughter and his son-in-law are starting a plan. Who determines what that, I mean, is that good enough, what they're doing, or how does that, how do we proceed with that?
That will be run through the zoning department, so they do it all based on our outlines within our zoning code and past practice. We have a procedure that we follow.
Okay. When I talked to Tom last week, I told him my concerns with that is there's, and I know that we've discussed this a couple of different times, when 25 River has come up, is that there are a lot of zoning violations within the township that I think it's a matter of opinion which one is worse than the other, you know, on the 1,000 block of River Road, the 1,000 block of Bellas Road, the 2,100 block of Hinkley Hills, the 2,200 block of Ridge, 1,100 block of Center, 2,600 block of Center, and a lot of these have been going up for years, zoning violations. And my concern is, it appears, or it can appear, that we're just focusing on one. Whereas I told Tom, I would like to see the steps in place that we're on the same page with everybody. So the people who have been violating for many years, like 25 River, that we're addressing them all at the same time, because we don't want to give a proof source, you know, for someone, I feel that puts the township at a liability if we're just going after one and not going after all of the others. So I wanted to share that with both of you. That was the conversation I had with Tom, and that is my concern.
And that was with Tom Wilson or Tom Z?
Tom Wilson.
Okay, so just so all of the public knows, we have a list of violations. We are going at them one at a time, because that's all our staffing will allow. We are going with the oldest one. 25 River Road is the oldest and worst right now. Once this is done, we will then move to the next, as long as the board is in agreement. So what we've just, we've done is, we have to collect enough documentation over the course of the period of time before we can go after zoning violations. This was something, you know, if you talk to the prosecutor's office, they're like, oh, my gosh, 10 years, that's really too long. But here in Hinkley Township, we give a tremendous amount of time to allow these residents to clean up. One of the things that happened in 2020, when we did our last cleanup, was that residents in that area came here and had conversation with us and said, why did it take so long? So, you know, here we are, just trying to make sure we're giving those homeowners the benefit of the doubt, and this is the worst and the longest case in Hinkley Township at this point. That's why we're tackling it first.
So and we don't have to, we don't have to discuss this right now, and just want to throw this out there for you both to think about, and it's something that maybe we discuss August, September, or maybe we don't discuss it, maybe you both think it's not appropriate, but you know, it's been mentioned a couple of different times about staff with zoning, and is this something that we need to start talking about, maybe hiring a full-time zoning inspector?
I wouldn't be opposed to that.
On that?
I wouldn't be opposed to that. I think that our zoning staff does a very nice job. I think that they are in sync and work collectively. We have a part-time zoning inspector, and Tom Z specifically works on these cases. And I don't know that a full-time zoning inspector is what's necessary. Maybe we just need a little bit more time from Tom Z as it pertains to violations. But I wouldn't be opposed to that conversation at all. I think that our zoning department oftentimes is a department that people come in, they, they're looking for someone to speak to, and sometimes they're just not here because we're Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday from nine to two.
Okay. Jack, what do you think about that?
It's, it's something to consider, as far as this property goes. I don't know that it's the worst. I haven't been out to all of them. In my opinion, it's visually not the worst from the road. I, I see others that are in worse condition. But after I spoke with Chief Senator, he was proactive enough to take it on himself and make arrangements and find these people and talk with them. So, in, in light of the fact that he's got them moving in the right direction, and is recommending we go forward with this, I'm okay with that.
So before we would move forward out with the resolution, just so you are both aware, we've changed the date on this several times. Ohio revised code requires 30 days from the, the resolution to the quote-unquote hearing, which would be a time that he could come in and have conversation with us if need be. So we have changed the date to reflect August 22 with our quick math that we did August 17, which had previously been listed, and I apologize, I'm on my phone, I'm looking at my calendar, was the 30-day mark, and our meeting is on the 15, which wouldn't allow for the 30 days as required by Ohio revised code. So if you're in agreement, I'd like to give him the opportunity to come in on the 22nd. Or at least put that date in our resolution to allow for that opportunity with him.
And could that be also a representative from his family? It doesn't necessarily need to be him.
Absolutely.
Okay. So this gives him slightly more than the 30 days.
Correct.
I'm not opposed.
Trustee Sweater?
I said, I'm fine right now.
Okay, August 22 is fine? Okay. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to, and turn to resolution, to provide for the removal of one insecure, unsafe, or structurally defective buildings, two garbage, refuse, and debris, and three junk motor vehicles that have accumulated on the property known as 25 River Road, Hinkley, Medina County, Ohio 44233. Whereas Ohio provides, section 505.86 authorizes the Board of Township Trustees to provide the removal, repair, or secureance of buildings or other structures in the township that have been declared insecure, unsafe, or structurally defective by any fire department under contract with the township or by the county building department. And whereas ORC section 505.87 authorizes a Board of Township Trustees to provide for the abatement, control, or removal of vegetation, garbage, refuse, and other debris from land in the township if the board determines that the owner's maintenance of that vegetation, garbage, refuse, or other debris constitutes a nuisance. And whereas ORC section 505.871 authorizes a Board of Township Trustees to remove any vehicles located in the unincorporated territory of the township, the trustees determine to be junk motor vehicles as defined in ORC section 505.13E. And whereas the Hinkley Township Assistant Zoning Inspector has received multiple reports of nuisance conditions of the property known as 25 River Road, Hinkley, Ohio, parcel number 01603B03023, located in Hinkley Township, herein referred to as the property. The Assistant Zoning Inspector has conducted multiple inspections of the property over the years from the roadway and from the adjacent properties, and has based upon these observations and an examination of the vegetation, garbage, refuse, debris, has determined that the vegetation, garbage, refuse, and other debris does constitute a nuisance, and the vehicles on the property are junk motor vehicles as defined in ORC 505.13E. Whereas since 2016, the Hinkley Township Assistant Zoning Inspector and Medina County Health Department has sent multiple letters to the property owner, Vasso Majalvik Jr., informing him that the debris, garbage, and junk motor vehicles are a nuisance. Whereas on May 1, 2020, the Medina County Health Department obtained a default judgment, permanent injunction, ordering the owner, Vasso Majalviks Jr., to abate the solid waste, public health nuisance by removing all of the old garden tractors, miscellaneous household-type items, scrap metal items, and refuge and garbage and other solid waste located on the property. Section 1, the approximately 16 junk motor vehicles on the property listed by the Assistant Zoning Inspector in Exhibit A are hereby determined to be junk are hereby determined to be junk motor vehicles.
I think you skipped the page.
Skip the page. Whereas. Let me read it.
Bear with me. This is what Suzanne gave me. Please fold. Perfect, I'll need to turn this if you don't mind, thank you. Whereas on January 11th, 2023, the Hinckley Township Assistant Zoning Inspector, in conjunction with the Hinckley Police Department, conducted a search warrant and found the following abandoned junk motor vehicles, which include tractors, a backhoe, a bulldozer, refuse, and debris on the property. One, approximately 16 junk motor vehicles, which include tractors, a backhoe, and bulldozer, as defined in ORC section 505.13E, and that they are more than three years old, are apparently inoperable, and are extensively damaged as set forth in the Assistant Zoning Inspector's inventory of the junk motor vehicles, which include tractors, a backhoe, a bulldozer, described in detail in attached Exhibit A. Two, there are multiple piles of debris in the yard as set forth in the Assistant Zoning Inspector's Exhibit A, which includes vegetation, garbage, refuge, and/or debris, old garden tractors, miscellaneous household items, type items, scrap metal items, abandoned scrap metals, miscellaneous pieces of equipment, deconstructed machinery, tires, and solid waste. Whereas on January 11th, 2023, the Hinckley Township Assistant Zoning Inspector, in conjunction with the Hinckley Police Department, conducted a search warrant and found a shed located in the backyard. The Assistant Zoning Inspector determined that the shed was insecure, unsafe, or structurally defective. The shed has holes and its roof and walls are collapsing. Whereas, ORC 505.86 authorizes the removal of insecure, unsafe, or structurally defective buildings or structures. 505.87 authorizes the removal of vegetation, garbage, refuge, or debris. And 505.871 authorizes the removal of junk motor vehicles. Hinckley Township Trustees order the property owner to immediately remove vegetation, garbage, refuge, and/or debris, which includes old garden tractors, miscellaneous household-type items, scrap metal items, abandoned scrap metal, miscellaneous pieces of equipment, deconstruction machinery, deconstructed machinery and tires, and the removal of insecure, unsafe, or structurally defective building shed. And the property owner to immediately remove the approximately 16 motor junk vehicles listed in Exhibit A. And if the owner and/or lien holders do not abate said conditions voluntarily upon receiving notice from the township, and after given, having been given the opportunity for a hearing to challenge the township's findings and orders, the Hinckley Township Trustees may proceed to remove the insecure, unsafe, or structurally defective building shed, the vegetation, garbage, refuse, and/or debris, which includes old garden tractors, miscellaneous household-type items, scrap metal items, abandoned scrap metal, miscellaneous pieces of equipment, deconstruction machinery, and tires, and the junk motor vehicles. I want to make sure I have this right. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Hinckley Township, Medina County, Ohio, that section 1, the approximately 16 junk motor vehicles on the property listed by the Assistant Zoning Inspector in Exhibit A are hereby determined to be junk motor vehicles, and the owner of the property is hereby ordered to remove those junk motor vehicles from the property within 14 days after township provides notice of this order. Section 2, the vegetation, garbage, refuge, and/or debris, old garden tractors, miscellaneous household-type items, scrap metal items, abandoned scrap metals, miscellaneous pieces of equipment, deconstruction machinery, tires, and solid waste, described and documented by the Hinckley Township Assistant Zoning Inspector outlined in Exhibit A, are found to be a nuisance. And the owner of the property is hereby ordered to abate, control, or remove said vegetation, garbage, refuge, and debris from the property within seven days after the township provides notice of this order. Section 3, the building shed is structurally insecure, and the owner is hereby directed to remove, repair, or secure said structures within 30 days after the township provides notice of the order. Section 4, the Hinckley Township Assistant Zoning Inspector is hereby authorized and directed to publish notice of the order in a newspaper of general circulation in the township and send notice of this order and notification that a hearing may be requested on August 22nd, 2023 to challenge such order to the owner of the property, Vasso Majalvik, and any holders of legal or equitable liens via certified mail and return receipt requested. Section 5, this resolution shall be in full force and effective from and immediately after its adoption. Can I have a second?
Second.
Call the rule. Augustine?
Yes.
Asher?
Yes.
Sweattick, yes.
Thank you. I will go ahead and pass this down for signatures. Thank you. Thank you for the missing piece of paper. Perfect, thank you. Okay. That was a long one. I'm moving on. I've got a motion to request appropriations for the annual iWork System Internet Software Software Management and Support for August 2023 to July 2024 at a cost of $1,500. This is our regular working software that we use for all zoning.
Second.
Second by Asher, any discussion?
None.
All in favor?
I. And we've got the 2023 Second Quarter Cemetery Report, more exciting times here. Nothing to write home about. It looks like our total cost for this quarter were $1,076 as opposed to last quarter, which was $3,303. If you guys have any questions on it, please let me know. We've got a year on total at this point of $4,379. And then I've got two Maple Hill Cemetery deeds. Can I get two witnesses, please, from the audience to watch the trustees sign these deeds? Thank you. I will give you.
Jeff's always there, Signor.
I'm gonna pass it down. You can see them all signed.
He's prepared with. With his pen.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, under under trustees, pardon?
Just keep swimming.
Trustees, we have appropriations for OTA training webinars. I'll let you each make the motion for your department.
Lynn had requested to take these two webinars about websites, updates, and media rights. So I'm making a motion for Lynn Rotunda to take OTA webinars, Navigating Township Media Rights, Understanding Photo Use for Websites and Publications at a cost of $30 on July 20th, 2023, and Maintaining Compliance: External Resources and Township Media Rights at a Cost of $30 on August 21st, 2023, at a total cost of $60.
Second.
Seconded by Augustine, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
I. And I'd like to make a motion for Suzanne Peterland to take OTA webinar-making and defending zoning decisions on July 19th, 2023, at a cost of $20.
Second.
Second by Asher, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Hi.
Trustee Augustine.
Yes, so we had agreed to plant two trees in honor of former trustees Ron Rhodes and Ray Schulte on the bordering property between the Historical Society and the property next door. I had Linda help me with this. She is one of the head directors of the Hinckley Garden Club. She and her club have done a phenomenal job in town center. And, you know, I saw some kind of back and forth about this on Facebook today. It's it's very interesting. I didn't realize what a specialty tree this was until I started making phone calls to determine if anyone had some in stock and what the price points would be. Linda always works with Greensmith Garden Center first. They do not have it in stock. That doesn't mean we can't order it, but they did not have it in stock. I also spoke with Petites Davis Tree Farm. They did not have the tree at all. I left messages for Minch Tree Farm and Number One Landscaping. The only other greenhouse that had this tree was Boyarts, and their price point was $249 each with a $50 delivery. Linda has told me that she can typically, the tree is priced at $349.99 a piece. She was able to get them for $200 per tree because she works there part-time with a delivery fee of $60 to $80, depending on if they're in the area or not. She gave me a plethora of information about how hardy these trees are. They are not native to Ohio. There are variations that are native to Ohio, but she thinks that this is the best tree for that area. And so if everyone's in agreement, I'd like to make a motion to purchase two harvest gold crab apple trees from Grace Brothers at a cost of $200 per tree, plus the delivery fee of $60 to $80 for a total amount not to exceed $500. These trees will be planted in honor of those former trustees Rhodes and Schulte. Linda's husband will dig the holes and they will wait till fall to plant them.
Um. I was, when I was wondering why we had not reached out to the Greensmith, so I did a little due diligence this morning, and I did reach out to John from the Greensmith. He actually quoted me $300 instead of what was yours, Melissa? $200 per tree. It was $300 for both trees, which he said he could actually get on Monday if we wanted them. And they would donate the delivery and the digging of them, so it would be a total cost of $300 if we used the Greensmith. However, we did get that email. I'm not sure if you both had a chance to look at the email as well that Mr. Pearl had sent. Three, I'm sorry, 350 Hinckley had sent about the trees that are native to Ohio. So while I was talking to John from the Greensmith, I did ask him what other types of trees we could plant that would be native to Ohio. And he had given me a couple of different options of a dogwood, flowering dogwood, or a regular dogwood. An eastern red bud was his first recommendation. And then also, there are four types of magnolia trees that are native to Ohio. That he had mentioned those. So he said, debating on what it is that we selected, he could get me a quote on those.
Dogwood was another one that Linda had mentioned to me just in conversation that she felt would do well in that area, so I would be fine with that.
And 350 Hinckley, I appreciate the input, and I I do like the thought of a policy that native species, you know, maintenance-friendly, that kind of thing. So I would rather do something that falls in that category.
So are you?
So is one of the dog?
The dogwood?
I would rather do that.
I will email him. I told him I would let him know tomorrow. I said we would discuss it today. And I would let him know tomorrow, and he can get us a quote, and they are happy to donate the delivery and the planting of it.
And we don't, I mean, we don't need it right now. If we're not planning a fall, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I also was contacted by several residents, had concern about a video that they saw with regard to the Township trustee corner that was in the Hinckley Record as well as the newsletter. I went back to the meeting minutes so that I could have a clear indication of happenings. Just so the public knows, I was on the board in 2017 when we started the trustee corner for the Hinckley Record. At that time, it was trustee Schulte, as well as trustee Sambor and myself. We wrote it intermittently. We took turns. So one month it would be Dave Sambor, one month it would be Rachel T., one month it would be me. Sometimes the picture would be all three of us. Sometimes it would be single, but we always took turns writing it and continued on that way. The newsletter was established by myself in 2020 for the purpose of transparency and better communication with township residents. And we decided as a board, being myself and Jack, when I went back and looked at the meeting minutes, that we thought that it was time to move forward. We are, we've got a brand-new website that we use. We've got YouTube channel that really, if you look at our other townships in Medina County, we are one of the few that offers the virtual option and offers a YouTube channel. So we thought that that served a better transparency based on our conversation in those meeting minutes. So I just wanted to go back and share that information and clarification. If anyone has any questions about things that you're seeing on videos and things of that nature, please give us a call. You know, let us clear the air for you. Also, wanted to let everyone know that the Hinckley Cub Scouts have announced their garage, their annual garage sale on Saturday, September 9. And we will be discussing a flea market here in the near future. Last year, they attempted to do it here at Town Hall, so I'll keep you posted. And I'd also like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss discipline against a public employee, and I'd like to go right away if we can.
Second.
Going to executive session at 717. Seconded by Asher. Call the rule, Augustine?
Yes.
Asher?
Yes.
Sweattick, yes.
Perfect, thank you.
We'll be right. We'll be right.
Six P M. Second. I'm sorry, second.
We'll call the role Augustine?
Yes.
Ashroll?
Yes.
Sweattick, yes. Is that it for you, Melissa?
Yes. Thank you.
Trustee Ashroll.
Okay, um, I had on my agenda to request a three month leave of absence for Lisa Rushworth, who is one of our township proctors. But Martha had sent me an email today reminding me that she is an independent contractor. So there is no need for an approval. She's just taking a three month leave. Jackson has said that he is good to go with proctoring when Jackson cannot proctor for the next three months. It's something I think that we will be able to handle. I think it's simpler now that we're not, there's not participation from people on Zooms. Let people in and record the meeting. So thank you for being flexible.
Thank you, Jackson.
Okay, we already talked about the August movie night. Lynn has asked me to please remind everyone to pay your Kimball bill if you have not done so yet before August 31st of this year, because that is when it will go to assessment. So if you haven't paid, please pay your bill. I wanted to talk to you both about, we all received an email a couple of weeks ago from a company that wanted to know if we would be interested in hosting an e-waste recycling drive this fall or next spring. It gives people, it's a free event. They just need a large parking lot. So they asked that we help promote the event by posting it on our website and any community social media pages. But they typically see between 250 and 300 vehicles at the event generally on a Saturday from nine until 12. And it's, it's, it gives everybody an opportunity within the township to get rid of electronics like flat screen TVs or monitors, tube TVs. I don't know what that is, if that's like an old fashioned. Is it, is it those really big heavy ones? So really big, heavy ones? Okay.
Yeah.
Those. When you actually had to get up and walk to the TV. I never had one that my dad had a really long cord attached. Um, so desktops, laptops, it just gives, it gives residents an opportunity to safely dispose of this. So I wanted to see your thoughts on that, both of you. Is that something you'd be interested in pursuing for the township?
Absolutely. And I would love to see a shredding truck here as well.
My only question was that, you know, we, we already have recycling. Would this benefit that, that, you know, are people going to hang on to things to dispose of them in that manner? I don't object to it. The only issue I see would be procuring the space to handle it. Looks like they need a relatively large space for the equipment they have and to support vehicle movements. He's talking about maybe doing it in a school, in a school parking lot. So if that's something you want to look into, I wouldn't object to it.
I know there's a couple of different companies around here that do this. So before I started digging into it, because I believe they all offer them for a free, free of charge, no, no price for it. So it's a community service they offer. So I wanted to see that you were both open to that before I dig into it. Okay, very good. More to come on that. And then I wanted to have a little bit more discussion about the Kimball opt out letter. I don't know if you both had an opportunity to look at that, that was sent earlier today. If you had any recommended changes?
No, I saw it. I don't.
It's for, it's the dates.
Yeah.
It's the dates that change in it. So we made a couple of small changes to the wording last year that she did not do this year. It's just the dates.
I would just recommend sending it to the prosecutor, especially the affidavit. But yeah, it looks fine to me.
All right. If you're both okay with it, then I will have Lynn go ahead and send it to the prosecutor. Because I did not see any other changes that I would recommend with it. And then I wanted to continue our conversation with the survey options that we discussed at the last meeting and thought a lot about what Martha offered with her input on it. And I, I do think that you would get a certain amount of survey bias with sending out just a yes or no survey. I think that from just being out speaking to a majority of the residents, I think that the majority of the township is happy with a single hauler. So I think that, I still think that the survey is important to send out, but I don't know that it's a yes or no. I think we need to work on the questions that we want to know. Are we happy with Kimball? Are we happy with a five year contract or is this something that we need to look at maybe having a two or a three year contract? Do we want to talk about, yes, we're happy with this as long as there is a price to not exceed? Because we already know that when we signed this contract, this was pre-COVID. So people that have independent trash service that they choose their own or even communities that have a single hauler, their prices have gone up significantly. This is where we kind of lucked out that we were in this five year contract with Kimball. So I just think we need to, all three of us work together on what, what are the answers to the questions that really are the biggest issue with this contract? And open to your thoughts on all of that.
Based on previous conversation, I think those are the talking points and I would support a survey that, that asks those questions.
Okay. Do you, can you, and we can, we've got time. The only other thing I wanted to know is, do you agree with Martha to do this like January, February of next year? Because remember the contract is good until January of 2025. So are we thinking, put this off until first quarter of next year? Or would you like, because that would be, that would be an additional mailer. Because we are talking about, this is our final opt out letter, everyone. We don't have to do it again. Okay? It's our final, well, we don't have to do it again. So we don't have to do it again. No. Do we want to send it out now to save some money in, you know, in August? Or do you want to send this out next year?
I would say sooner the better because you don't want to get caught behind the ball and trying to get something together if, but.
So I'm just going to write August tentatively. And then are you both comfortable coming to the next meeting with like three or four questions that we can discuss? And I'm thinking, I think Tom, is Tom here today? I think Tom said this, on generally it's like five to six questions. That's your best, that's the best number for a survey. So.
I wouldn't go over five. And I think if we do just five, we can keep it a half a sheet of paper and maybe save some money there too. But if we're doing the mailing, this is the prime opportunity. We're spending $2,800, $3,000. It's, it's the time to send this.
Okay. Now I just said I was, I just said I was good with the Kimball letter, but thoughts of, do we want to throw this in there? Or are we going to use the responses from the survey? Of, I think it's going to be really, really important for people to know. If you want to opt out, like we need your opt outs this year. Everybody that wants to opt out, because that's going to give us a better idea of where we go with a new contract. If we remain single hauler, where do we go in terms of, do we need 10%? Do we need 12%? Do we need 15%? Do we need 20% of an opt out? And I know from conversation with a lot of residents that people have just given up. They're like, I'm not going to get it. I'm not going to get the opt outs. I'm not even going to try for it. Is that something that we would want to add into this annual opt out letter of, you know, your participation is very important this year? Or would that be something to include in the survey?
Oh, in the survey.
Okay. All right. So then we will be ready to go.
Or do you want to do, you want to hold a work session to discuss all that?
We can do a work session. Well, I'm, I'm open to a work session. Melissa, what about you?
I would think, you know, with Lynn handling a lot of complaints, that she'd be a good source to have in there as well.
Actually, I spoke to her about it today. Yeah, I'm, I've got some availability.
All right. Are you guys thinking next week now? I don't have my work on with me because I know I have some meetings next week, early week. Would you guys be available? Well, evening after 5:30?
Or before 10:00.
Or before 10:00?
I could even do a four o'clock.
Yeah, but if you do it during the day, Lynn can be there, you know, without a problem.
She's here at nine. Why don't we do like a nine o'clock just to make sure she's available? Suzanne has good input as well. She's been part of this contract for the last four years.
So I am available at 9:00 AM next Wednesday, the 26th, if that works for either of you.
Done.
That's fine.
Just think like maybe an hour we'll plan for.
Hour, eight, whatever.
It's been a while since our last work session, right? I think.
The letter goes out in September?
Uh, I think we sent it out the last week of August last year, but maybe it was the first week of September. You know what? It's September because we do the, the delinquencies and then we do.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Yeah.
It gives us time if we want to tweak it.
Okay. That's all I have.
Very good. Already Valley broke the motion for the ARPA funds. So I sent you both the letter from the attorney handling the ARPA funds for us. And they provided us with an opinion letter. Basically that it says, yeah, we're good to go. And they drafted a resolution for us. So at this time I will make a standby here.
Oh, it's only two pages. Not as long as Melissa's.
It's like four.
What do commissioners do? Don't they just read it into the?
Yeah, I asked Martha that once and she said, read it.
That's why she left.
Yeah.
She knew all these resolutions.
I move for resolution authorizing expenditure from the American Rescue Plan Act funds be resolved by the Hinckley Township trustees of Hinckley Township. Whereas this date, July 17, 2023, trustee Sweattick moved the adoption of the following resolution. Whereas the township has received the distribution of monies, the ARPA funds from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, ARPA or the act, and whereas Congress passed the act effective March 11, 2021. And whereas section 603 created the coronavirus. whereas section 603 created the coronavirus, coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund, which, among other things, appropriated money to cities, non-entitlement units of local government and counties to mitigate the fiscal effects stemming from the public health emergency with respect to the coronavirus disease COVID-19. And whereas section 603(c) generally provides that, one, use of funds subject to paragraph two and except as provided in paragraphs three and four, a metropolitan city, non-entitlement unit of local government or county shall only use the funds provided under a payment made under this section to cover costs incurred by the metropolitan city, non-entitlement unit of local government or county by December 31, 2024. A, to respond to the public health emergency with respect to the coronavirus disease 2019, COVID-19, or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, and nonprofits, or aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. B, to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers of the metropolitan city, non-entitlement unit of local government or county that are performing such essential work, or by providing grants to eligible employers that have eligible employee, workers who perform essential work. C, for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue of such metropolitan city, non-entitlement unit of local government or county due to the COVID-19 public health emergency relative to revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year of the metropolitan city, non-entitlement unit of local government or county prior to the emergency. Or D, to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. Whereas Department of Treasury final rule published on January 6, 2022, and effective April 1, 2022, provides in part that Treasury presumes that up to $10 million in revenue has been lost due to public health emergency, and recipients are permitted to use that amount not to exceed the award amount to fund government services, the standard allowance. Whereas the rule further observes that the standard allowance provides an estimate of revenue loss that is based on an extensive analysis of average revenue loss across states and localities, and offers a simple, convenient way to determine revenue loss, particularly for coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds' smallest recipients. This change is intended to promote administrative efficiency and simply revenue loss calculation for smaller recipients. Whereas the rule further clarifies that recipients can use SLRF funds on local government services up to the revenue loss amount, whether that be the standard allowance amount or the amount calculated using the final rule four-step process. Government services generally include any service traditionally provided by a government unless Treasury has stated otherwise. Whereas some common examples of government services expressly recognized by Treasury are as follows: road building and maintenance and other infrastructure; health services; general government administration staff and administrative facilities; environmental remediation; provision of police, fire, and other public safety services, including purchase of fire trucks and police vehicles; maintenance or pay-go funded building infrastructures; modernization of cybersecurity, including hardware, software, and protection of critical infrastructure. Whereas government services is deemed by Treasury the most flexible use category under the SLR-FRF program, and funds are subject to streamlined reporting and compliance requirements. And whereas funds utilized pursuant to the standard revenue loss allowance continue to have certain restrictions, including deposit into pension funds, satisfaction of settlements or judgments, contribution to financial reserves or rainy day funds. Whereas the Board of Trustees has identified a project which, in the judgment of the board, qualifies as a permitted use of the ARPA funds in direct support of governmental services, which consists of the following: Valley Brook Boulevard project at a cost of $549,835. The project. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved by the board that the township elects to use the standard allowance and its presumption of revenue loss due to the public health emergency, and to use that amount authorized herein to fund government services. Two, the project is hereby authorized and shall be paid for from the ARPA funds in the amount of and amount not to exceed $549,835. Three, the project described herein serves as the objectives of the Act by providing services traditionally provided by a government, namely, road repair, maintenance, and other transportation and safety services. Four, accordingly, the project is in the best interest of the township and is deemed a priority for the community. Five, this project will be categorized as expenditure category EC 6.1, provision of government services. Six, no obligations paid under the authority of this resolution were incurred prior to March 3, 2021. Then I get a second. Trustee Augustine seconded the motion, and thereupon the votes in favor of this resolution are recorded and reflected by signatures heretofore. Be it further resolved that it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions in this township concerning and relating to the adoption of the resolution were adopted in an open meeting of the township trustees, and that all deliberations of the township trustees and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in a meeting open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements in section, including section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. I will call the roll. Trustee Augustine?
Yes.
Trustee Asherall?
Yes.
Sweattick, yes. Adopted the 17th day of July, 2023. That was fun.
Um, and do you need to change it to the 18th?
Correction, 18th.
You just want to go ahead and reread that whole thing again?
Adopted the 18th day of July, 2023.
Seconded as amended.
And again, in the beginning, whereas this date, July 18. Okay.
I caught it, but I didn't want to interrupt you. You were on a roll, so.
Seconded as amended. We probably should vote one more time.
We will. Seconded as amended by Augustine. I'll call the roll again. Augustine?
Yes.
Asherall?
Yes.
Sweattick, yes. Okay. And now, I go one more. I will move to adopt a resolution to hire Lewis and Lynn Professionals Incorporated to perform the engineering services for a road improvement project on Bethany Lane in an amount not to exceed $10,000.
Second.
Seconded by Asherall. Any discussion here?
The county can't do it.
This is, no, the county, this, the county can't take on this project.
Okay.
Because of the scope. So, this, this is to identify those areas that we can capture using the remaining balance of these funds.
Perfect.
Okay. That was your second?
My second.
Asherall.
Asherall seconded. I'm going to call the roll on this one. Augustine?
Yes.
Asherall?
Yes.
Sweattick, yes. Okay. Now, I can reprint that and get the signature.
Motion to pay the bills?
What?
I don't know that she sent it over. That's why I thought maybe you have it.
Okay. Move to pay the bills in the amount of $115,074.79.
Second.
Seconded by Asherall. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we'll move to the public. Anybody? I'd like you to sit back down.
It's a record. I'll be 48.
Good evening. So, good to hear.
You have to say your name.
Oh, I forgot. I forgot my name, in other words. No. Cindy Engelmann, Ridge Road. So, good news about the movie night, and I think that's kind of cool. And what I was going to suggest, the movie rights for the movie, as a resident of Hinkley, I'd be more than happy to donate, pay for those movie rights for that night, if that would be amenable to whomever is running this. So, just thought I'd throw that out there for consideration.
Like co-host it with the place association?
Um, however, that would work. Sure. So.
Martha would be happy with that. We wouldn't have to ask her for the money. So, I have no objection. Melissa, do you have?
I want to give the Fire Association an opportunity, just because they wanted to be a part of it last time we did it, and I don't know that we've spoken to them about that.
I will email the fire chief tonight and see if they wanted to do it with the association. But that.
Okay. Just, just thought I'd throw that out there, since nobody mentioned, nobody mentioned it tonight. So, um, so the only thing I had kind of a question on, or maybe, because it had not appeared on, and I don't know which zoning section of the agenda it would be, but there's concept plan review for Country Brook Cove tomorrow at the planning department. And I thought maybe it would be of interest to have some status or information, and it wasn't on either of the agenda for tonight or last meeting. So, I just thought that would be worthwhile if somebody wanted to speak to it or whatever.
We just got the email yesterday. So, there's a concept plan meeting tomorrow at 11 o'clock.
Okay. Well, there was a email, June 29th, that went out to, um, all of you and some of the zoning people that went out June 29th.
Was that for comment, or was that for the meeting itself?
This was for comment.
Well, that's different.
Let, let me, well, let me finish my statement, because at the July 5th Commissioners Meeting, I can't remember her name, from planning, reported to the Commissioners that there was going to be, Hinkley Township was going to be on the concept plan meeting in July. And when I presumed it was to be regarding the downtown area, in fact, trustee Augustine yourself and Chairman Fisher quickly jumped in to correct me that that was for Country Brook. So, that was knowledge, at least definitely July 5th. And on July 6th, we received an email, um, to come back with comment by July 11th. So, um, so it had been out there since the end of June. So.
So, the comment is only sent to the zoning commission. The department heads, the trustees, and as a zoning commission.
So, my, my point, my point was, I would have, I just would have thought.
I was speaking.
If I, if I could finish my question, then you could have the floor, is that there's a category called zoning, and I don't know whether you would put it under the zoning or under the trustee section, but, you know, to share information about what's going on in a township, because certainly Serenity Courts, I think, or whatever it was called before, has been multiple attempts at developing that property, which sits between 303 and Country Brook. And so, this was out there, and I just thought, gee, why hasn't that just been put out there for sharing, just as a status, much like we talk about the Cub Scouts doing the garage sale? So.
Right. And so, we received that email yesterday at about 3:00, and the agendas were already turned in. So, thank you for bringing that to everyone's attention.
Anyone else?
Ryan Morgan, 403 River Road. Just wanted to take a second to thank all three of you for coming out to the Hinkley Gun Shop grand opening on Friday. Some of you may or, may not know, if you haven't gone by all of our gaudy advertising that I, I had to learn the hard way about filling out permits for, but I just wanted to take a second to thank all three of you guys, because it means a lot. My wife and I are new here, and we wanted to provide something that isn't there anymore, but in a newer, fresher light and on, you know, newer terms. And it was awesome to have the three of you there and basically like baptizing or christening the place. So, it was, it was really cool. And that, to me, still is the highlight of the weekend. It went well. We had over 100 folks come through foot traffic wise. A lot of interest, got a lot of feedback on things that are specific to Hinkley and Hinkley's needs, which is what we're there for. We don't want to be the next Finn, Feather, and Fur. We want to be here for 50, 60, 70, 80 years and have all of my six children maybe operate it for generations to come. So, I just wanted to take a second to thank you guys for being there again, and it means a lot to Corinne and I. So.
Thank you for bringing the gun shop back to Hinkley.
I didn't know we were christening. I would have brought like a bottle of champagne down break over it. I was just, I was thinking it as I was saying it. Alcohol, guns, like, hey. Good luck, good luck to you. And so, you did a, you did a wonderful job restoring it. I know you and Carl both, you guys did a great job.
We're going to keep trying to do what we can. So, thank you.
Appreciate it. Good luck. That was an amazing number of people there. It was, yeah, it was. Wish you well. Anybody else? Okay. Nothing else for the good order. I will move to adjourn at 7:55 P.M.
Second.
Second by Asherall. All in favor?
Aye.